I'd like to say good evening to everyone. I'd like to call the regular session of the February twenty-seventh Aiken County School Board Meeting to order. We'll begin this session with our devotion and prayers by Ms. Janice Kitchens. Dr. Janice Kitchens.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Alfred. Simon T. Bailey, the author of Release Your Brilliance: The Four Steps to Transforming Your Life and Revealing Your Genius to the World, believes that inside every one there is an inner brilliance that's waiting to be released. In his book, he references the term we have all heard, "a diamond in the rough." This means one having exceptional qualities or potential but lacking refinement or polish. We all know that diamonds are stunning, valuable, and highly treasured. But did you know that they go through an amazing evolution or process to become the sparkling gems we love so much? The diamonds we see today are formed over millions, if not billions, of years. Even after a rough diamond is mined, it still has to go through a lengthy process of refining, cutting, and polishing. The first stop is the cleaver. The cleaver cuts the diamond to bring out the profile of the diamond to determine its shape. Next, it's worked on by a highly skilled and specialized cutter to bring out the facets of the diamond. A diamond, a radiant-cut diamond, has a total of seventy facets to bring out the diamond's brilliance. The diamond's brilliance is defined as the reflection of white light from the facets. Each facet is precisely placed and masterfully shaped to maximize the brilliance of the stone. This is precisely placed and masterfully shaped. The more polished, the more light that can pass through them, and the more brilliant the diamond shines. In Mr. Bailey's book, he uses the analogy of the diamond to reshaping one's life and showcasing one's diamond-like brilliance. But I want to use it to reference us providing a top-notch education to help all students reach their full potential. Picture each and every one of our students as a brilliant diamond. This puts accountability in the hands of everyone: Board Members, District Leaders, School Administrators, Teachers, Support Staff, Parents, and Community Members. We owe it to our students to put forth every effort to access the brilliance that lies hidden within each and every one of them. As an emerging premier school district, we are faced with making decisions in the best interest of every child. But to do that requires us to continuously evaluate, examine, and act to provide the very best for our students so they can shine like diamonds. Please stand for the pledge. Our flag is located to my left, out the window. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Kitchens, for the devotion and pledge. If there's no objection in the agenda, it will stand approved as presented. Here, no objection, agenda is approved. Approval of amendments for February thirteenth, twenty eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, it should be approved immediately on February thirteenth.
Second. Moved in second in a discussion. No discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposes, likewise. On a special order of business, Dr. Alfred.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to begin by asking our student apprentice Darby to come forward. Darby, if you would, please step on up here so folks can see you. We're excited to have apprentices throughout our school district, and Darby here is a current junior over at Aiken High School, but he serves as an apprentice in our Technology Department. He came in tonight, not only is he here, but he's done all this entire setup for us. I tell you what, it's great to see young folks contribute in a meaningful way, and he's learning to be a great employee. So Darby, thank you very much for being here tonight. But I would also ask the board to join me here in the front, if you will. We want to recognize the winners, the top three places for our spelling bee that we had last morning. So if you will, please join me.
Good evening, everyone. We can do better than that. Good evening, everybody. All right. Welcome to North Augusta High School. My name is Mike Rosier, and I serve as Communications Coordinator for Aiken County Public Schools. And we are here tonight to recognize and celebrate our top-three spelling bee winners from this year's Scripps Spelling Bee. It's one of our most anticipated events of the year, the Aiken County Public School District Spelling Bee. It's held at the A.D. Comm Center for the Performing Arts in downtown Aiken, and it never lacks for excitement as Aiken County's top spellers compete for the title of Aiken County Spelling Bee Champion. New to this year's competition was the fact that our winner would automatically qualify to travel to Washington, D.C. for the Scripps National Spelling Bee Finals later this year. This year, Mallory Zinger, a student from Langley Bath Clearwater Middle School—go ahead, Mallory, come on up—reclaimed the county title. Reclaimed the county title for LBC as our first-place winner. Mallory will represent Aiken County Public Schools when she attends the Scripps National Spelling Bee Finals later this year. Her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Andrew and Libby Zinger, are they here? Come on forward. Step forward. They're over there in the back. We'll give them time to get up. And also from LBC, her LBC family, Ms. Cherri Saunders, Ms. Sally Jenkins, and Principal Paul Spader. Let's give her a round of applause.
Now, this is gonna be a unique photograph.
It will be. Larry, go ahead and come on front. He's gonna have to serve as our district photographer tonight since I'm presenting. Congratulations, Mallory. Our second-place winner was Rena Hughes of J.D. Lever Elementary School, who gave Mallory a great battle down the stretch during our spelling bee. Rena, you're here?
Hi.
Come on, come on up front. Is your dad here with you tonight?
Hi.
Come on, come on up front, Dad. And finishing in third place this year was Ellis Waters of North Augusta Middle School. Ellis is joined tonight by North Augusta Middle School Principal— I think he's okay. How about a thumbs up, I guess, sir? Our third-place winner this year was Ellis Waters of North Augusta Middle School. Ellis is joined tonight by North Augusta Middle School Principal, Mrs. Phyllis Gamble. His parents, Mr. and Mrs. Waters, and Prayer Professional, Ms. Noel Shealy. Could you guys come forward, please? Everybody ready for the picture? Here we go. Let's give these students, schools, and parents another round of applause. Thank you so much. Congratulations. And we'll do it again next year. Thank you to Dr. Alfred and Board Members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Alfred, and to the staff here at North Augusta High School, and to all our participants from the spelling bee contest. Thank y'all for what y'all do for the district, and thank our teachers for preparing you for those events. Next, we will have Officer, the Board Chair. First of all, there was no public participation, I believe. No one signed up. And from the Office of the Board Chair, the only thing I would like to mention and get Board Members to just chime in would be the South Carolina School Board Association Annual Convention, which was held in February, what was it, eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth, I believe it was, at Hilton Head. And I would just say that it was a wonderful event that took place that weekend. I have to give Mr. High Tower and his staff, the South Carolina School Board Association. Congratulations, wonderful session. Great speakers and great presenters. Maybe you might can direct some of those folks to Aiken County to speak for us at some point in time. But if you'd like to add anything, Mr. High Tower or any other Board Member as well.
I would like to see if any way possible that we can bring Manny Scott to go and spoke on Sunday morning to Aiken, if we can get USC Aiken, Florida Aiken Technical College and Public Education all to chime in together to bring Manny Scott, because that was an excellent presenter. So I'll be talking with you, Dr. Alfred, and see who we need to contact at USC Aiken and Aiken Tech to see if we're doing a community-wide event, because this individual was very impressive, and he would be able to reach the entire community.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. High Tower said. And I should contact us with Mr. Dr. Alfred.
Ken?
I also would like to mention that Ms. Green was recognized as reaching Level Six with the South Carolina School Board Association, which essentially means when you go to these conferences, you get a lot of training, you see different speakers, and you can go hear discussions about different topics down there. Ms. Green has been to several of these and has reached the Level Six, which is the top level that you can get. So the family is one of the smartest ones up here, so we appreciate that. And also, I would like to recognize that we had—one of the presenters was a group from Aiken County. Did a great job, really engaged the folks down there. It got Mr. Mason engaged, for sure.
And also with the Level Six, it requires you to complete an exam as well. They just don't give you Level Six. Whenever you get to Level Six, you have to complete an exam, pass it, then they will award you Level Six completion. And we have several Board Members in Aiken County that have completed that. I remember last year, Mrs. English completed it, correct? Or the year before, within the last couple of years, several years ago, and I did it about six years ago. And we're glad to have Mr. Green on board. So Aiken County has really participated in the various levels of training.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all of the—anyone else? Okay. All right, we're gonna move right along here now. With our information on ours, we'll begin with Mr. Leiner with the legislative update.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Okay, the last meeting, we started talking about the budget, and if you remember, the different type of committees put in their requests for the budget. The Education Oversight Committee and the South Carolina Board of Education put their requests in, and the House rolled up all those requests, and we're starting to see what they feel is important or what they feel like they have money for this budget cycle. And it's a pretty tight year for money. They have about $292 million that is discretionary-type funding that they can allocate to different things that aren't already earmarked. So here's what we have so far. As we saw in the other two budget requests, they have some emphasis on teacher salaries, so they're proposing a 2% increase in teacher salary, which would be a one-step increase. They're not proposing any new funding for base student costs. And this is a big deal to us, because you remember, the request was for $125 per student, and we have 24,000 students. So that's a pretty good chunk of money there that the House doesn't feel like they can fund. So they're proposing to keep it at the 24-25 level, is what we're funded at this year. And they also included the rate that we should be funded at, which is required by law, of $3,018. So you can see that we're still—there's still a huge gap there between what should be funded and what we're actually funded at. They're keeping the charter school funding at the same base student cost to kind of match the typical public school funding. They are recommending some money for school bus purchases, $3 million in recurring funds and $5 million in non-recurring funds. This next item was technical assistance to the low performing schools, and it's really for reporting purposes and things like that, and that was in both of the requests. And then the last one there is $5 million to increase the teacher's starting salary from $30,000 to $32,000. You might remember, last time, we mentioned that Aiken County has actually the highest starting teacher pay, and it's $37,000 and some change there. So we're starting to kind of see what's going on there. We also talked about some provisos that the House was talking about, and all of those have been finalized, and they'll be discussed on the House floor. And the budget is gonna be—started to be discussed the week of March 12th, so two weeks from now, I guess, they'll start talking about it. But these are the provisos, and there's like fifty pages of provisos that the House is gonna consider when they start debating it. But these are the ones that we talked about last time and kind of make a little bit of sense for us to follow. Reading literacy coaches, that survived the cut, so they want to provide some money to keep that process going. School makeup days—we did talk about this one last time, but this is kind of interesting—to allow districts to use alternative means of instruction, like virtual instruction or online instruction for use in makeup days. Also, the teacher supplies, this is something that has been done for the next—last few years as part of a proviso, $275 for teachers. If you might remember, last year, we actually increased that by a little bit to $300. And then the last one there that we're gonna probably talk about a little bit later, but the proviso to offer contracts to retired teachers survived the cut also. So this would allow us to offer a contract on or before May 1st of each year. A new item we talked about a little bit last time, but I thought it was probably worthwhile us covering, was charter school funding. And this is a program where Erskine College is eligible to actually run charter schools throughout the state. So we're starting to see some kind of movement from charter schools, state charter schools, to use them to administer their program. So right now, nine of thirty-nine has moved to Erskine College. And the law doesn't designate how much the higher education institution can retain for administration, so it's pretty loose right now. And it wasn't really intended for these colleges to go out there and have multiple charter schools that they're administering, basically because they're setting up their own school districts. So—and then you also have the co-mingling of private funds and public funds. So this was something that was introduced by a House member, and Erskine has been doing it for a couple of years now, but there's no real accountability and there's no real firm legislation for it. So probably later on this session, we'll see something introduced to kind of firm this up a little bit. But the big T here is nine schools have already taken advantage of it, and it's state charter schools. These are charter schools that are run by the state. A little bit different than the charter schools we had that are authorized by the district, just so y'all know. This is another bill that is introduced in the Senate that has a little bit of steam, and it's a pay-for-unused leave. And what it would allow us—or allow teachers to do is get paid for unused leave, sick and annual leave in excess of ninety days, and this would take effect after July 1st of this year. This second bullet is kind of loose there. I think the original intent of this was we were gonna pay the teachers the substitute pay amount, which is significantly more than what we're getting teachers at now if they leave with sick time on the books. But the rate of pay is actually left up to the local board for approval. So unless that gets changed throughout the process, you know, we'd have to make a decision on what we thought was fair to pay the teachers. The status of that is it made it out of the Senate Committee on Education, and it's actually made it through the second reading on the Senate floor. So for those of you that aren't familiar with the way it happens, is you get a first and second reading, and then at the third reading, it passes through the particular chamber that it's in, and it goes to the next one. So the third reading should probably be just a matter of fact, and then it will go on to the House for approval. The next one is this tuition tax credits. We talked about this a little bit last time, that it had been a proviso for a number of years, and this is for exceptional-needs children and providing tax credits so that they can attend a private school. It was read the third time and sent to the Senate, so it made it out of the House, and it's in the Senate Committee on Finance. So it probably has a pretty good chance of making it through the system this time. All right, the next two bills are—the bills that we've been tracking on are retirees, and it hasn't made it out of any of the committees. The first one is this 822, it's still on the Senate Committee on Finance, and the next one is 828, which is still in the Senate Committee. So those are all the things we've been tracking so far, and I always like to try to end on a positive note. So a couple of things, we're using some of the—some of the USC Aiken men's basketball team players have been acting as mentors in some of our schools, so it's a pretty good engagement of our community. And also, this Saturday, we did have a recruitment fair and had 139 interviews with candidates, so it was pretty successful. And I had to go there to drop something off to my wife, and I couldn't get a parking place, so it looked like it was pretty successful. Any questions or anything?
I do have one, Mr. Leiner, maybe a couple.
Okay.
I pulled the tad bobber tonight. The Senate, on that next—on that go-back-on slide—
Mm-hmm.
So the Senate is saying that they're gonna remove the date, May 31st date, and the House is saying that's what they're adding.
Yeah, this is actual a bill that would do it permanently. Yeah, it would remove the May 31st date. And also, the other key to this bill, which I think is—and we're gonna talk about this a little bit later, depending on what we want to support, but I think the real key there is that it adds certified employees to that. This earnings limitation, it does not apply. Now, right now, that law agrees that it only applies to certified teachers, but this would open up the flexibility to any certified employee, so you'd catch your other employees with that. So I think that's a good thing. Unfortunately, it hasn't made it any—hasn't gained any steam, and we could talk about that a little bit later in our discussion, but—because Debbie Elmore covered some of that in the legislative update. Whereas the other one you were talking about, Mr. Green, is in the House, and that's a proviso, so that would only be a year long.
Okay.
And it doesn't add the certified employee, it just takes away that May 31st date.
Okay. And then I guess I'll go back to like your second page, I believe, but it talks about the—base student cost is gonna remain the same, so this is sort of the tip of the iceberg that says, since the lawsuit is going away, they're not gonna start—they're not gonna give us any more funding. They think they have reached the plateau where they believe that the poor schools are already taken care of.
Yeah, I hope not. I mean, I think we're gonna have to try to see—this would be an exception to the rule, because the last, what, three, four years, we've always seen some increase. You know, it may have been a small increase, $25, $50. You know, $125 seems pretty aggressive to me when they proposed it in their request, but then you go from $125 to zero is a pretty big drop. So hopefully, when it gets to debate on the House floor—this is only the funding that was coming out of the House Ways and Means Committee, so the House hasn't debated it yet. So hopefully, there'll be some pro-public education folks on the House floor that'll lobby to put some money in.
I think when they threw the lawsuit, when they declared the lawsuit was no longer needed—I think that's just my opinion.
I hope not. And remember, once the House does their version, then it'll go over to the Senate, and the Senate has a cut at it, and then typically, they don't agree on either one, so then they have a conference committee that kind of hashes out the details.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Officer, start to say two things. Speaking about the funding, not getting the $125 per student is not a good thing, especially when you look at where we're being funded and where we should be.
Exactly.
To be $125 would be a whole lot better, because it looks like we're roughly $600 less per student. And then, if you go to your last slide.
Where the smiley face went.
Yes. And I think we can add two other things. Reese Springer-Nettle will be in the playoff on Saturday, and North Augusta will be defending their championship next Saturday to bring it back home. Thank you.
Okay. On the A2, we have the financial report for December 31st. Send your packet. Any questions, Mr. Traxwell can answer. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to our consent items. These following items will be voted on as a group. Individuals, you all may stop me and discuss prior to taking a vote. If you want to stop me as we go along, so I'll need a motion. If you wanna stop me as we go along, so I need a motion to get it on the floor.
Move that we hear the consent items.
Sir. Move in second, so we'll begin with B one. This is a submission of the USDA Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program Grant for FY nineteen. And you all can see the, the amount that's been submitted for the different schools. I believe there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight schools, and I had a total someplace that come to about one hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred dollars, roughly a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars if we are able to get all those placed. Mr. Mace.
Is this a grant that we receive every year, or is it something that was gone after this year?
Mr. Traxwell?
Should I say question to the podium? It, it is, this is one that we've received annually for several years now, and typically, they same schools.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions on B one? Okay, B two, will be the proposed schedule for the school board meetings, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. I believe you have a copy in you that was sent to you earlier. And, yes, okay, Mr. Lyman, yes?
I just wanted to make one comment on, on that item here, and I appreciate the, I'll move it closer, sorry. I appreciate the addition of the, the satellite areas that we're gonna be doing. This is the first of, of a kind, I guess, that we're re-instituting, so I'm pretty excited about that. I think the areas, it'll be nice to get out into the areas and, and come to the people and, and try to let them see what we're, what we're doing and things like that.
Thanks, sir. All right, so, two. No other questions, so the motion's on the floor. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Opposes? None. C items, personnel appointments. Need a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the personnel appointment.
Second. It's moved in second, a discussion, just, just paying close attention to this, Mr. Lyman stated, all of the folks that were at the job fair, there's been a significant number that was offered jobs on the spot, so they're in your packet that we approved tonight. Great, great. Okay. I did need to go to the, I did, okay, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Opposes? None, okay. D brings up individual board members. I think the only thing we have really is listing on individual board members, report from board lays on to various committees, and Mr. Samaha.
All right, so in your, in your packet, there's a sample letter that I've been working on, with Mr. Lyman, to send to our legislative delegation in regards to that last, well, to the last two slides that were on Mr. Lyman's PowerPoint regarding teachers and the Terry program and retirees. In your packet, it has the original version of the letter, and then also the marking, the markups of Mr. Lyman's thoughts. And I, I think what happened, you have three different letters, if you just look at the first one, all three are the same, I believe. I think Miss Vicki just passed on the, on the key that said to me as a PDF as well as a word document, I think she just put it on all three, just to be safe, but if you just look at the first letter, that on PowerPoint, that, that's the one that we're discussing. Now, I wanted to leave the comments and thoughts that he had on there, Miss Lyman had on there, so that you could see a little bit of comparison of thought. But, what we hope to do is to send a resolution to our delegation that talks a little bit about the board's thoughts about, on the direction they should move in in terms of lifting the hiring requirements for certified employees, and he's that, says it seems to cover all our votes, that we need to be covering administrators, candidates, things like that, as well as the date of hiring. And lastly, also, what the, the state has it clearly defined what a special needs district or school is, and we have asked in this resolution that they clearly define that, so that we're all on the same page. We have two unique challenges in Aiken County, one is that we're riding on the border of Georgia, so that adds an additional pressure to us for children retirees. We're a person who retire here in Aiken County, they go right across the border, cut, oh, no, regular paycheck from the state of Georgia as a teacher, and then collecting time as well as South Carolina, and that puts us at a disadvantage, and that other districts may not necessarily face unless they're on the Georgia border, across the North Carolina border. The other challenge that we have is that, we haven't, is that designation of special needs, a critical geographic need, we really haven't got a clear definition, because our test scores and things like that are pretty decent, we don't quite qualify for some of that, for lifting on that, whether it's cap or anything. I don't know if Mr. Lyman wants to add sort of his thoughts, I kind of gauge my editorial comments.
Okay, Mr. Lyman?
Okay, I'll put it in front of you, so that you don't have to turn it up a little bit. Um, no, yeah, I, I think some of the, the comments you'll see are just purely editorial, and this English might be able to make sure that grammar, because the English is right.
I will.
And probably, I, I had another suggestion, so that we can tie together, you know, we have some recommendations down there at the bottom. One is supporting that Senate Bill eight twenty-eight that we talked about earlier, that, that does, you know, adds the, the certified employees, not just teachers, and removes that May thirty-first date. We also ask or recommend that they firm up the wording with the definition of the critical needs area, and actually add that definition. All the sections of the law have a definition section, and critical needs area is not in that section, so it would be a good thing to have in that section so someone could turn right to it. And then also, define a critical need district, you know, as a whole, because right now, the way that the wording is, is it, it says that it's individual schools, but then later on in that same thing, it talks about a critical need district, but it refers back to the definition. So, one thing I'd suggest, where we say furthermore, only seventy-five percent of our schools qualify as being in a critical group geographic need area, we probably should add some wording there, and there's no clear definition about a critical need district as a whole, and that, that kind of will cover all the recommendations we have at the bottom, too. That, that would be another suggestion there. And then I think, then I think it captures just about everyone's, you know, thoughts there.
Mr. Mace?
I, I have a couple of things here. One of them is that last sentence in that third paragraph, it says essentially, Aiken County's being punished for being a good school district, as well as our geographical location. I agree with that, I just, I would, I, I think some language surrounding the fact that we have been a good steward of the money that we have been given, and we have continued to, you know, operate at a high level, there's, we, we've, we've got some wins that we've had here, so we've done well with what's been given, and we should not be, it's another reason why we should not be punished. So, I don't know if we can to our own horn here about whether our, you know, abilities and what we've pulled off, but I, I think that's important. A second, and so I, I don't, I mean, I can write something if that's helpful, do we, I don't know if we have to do this right now, or if we're gonna try to get this approved, or if it's how this works this evening.
I mean, we could, but I, I think we need to, let's, let's clarify and I'll make sure. I don't think we dealing with the terms of, of being good stewards of the money, but we trying to address is that. They, they creating a situation for the school district not being able to be competitive, getting hiring these people back, so it's not, not a matter of them giving us money or the money that we have, we haven't been good stewards, it's just that they are handicapping people who's retiring, who would like to come back to work. So, they will still get the regular pay, it's, it's not, it's not gonna impact pay for us at all.
But it's gonna impact our ability to educate students, and so I'm out. Anyway, that, that was one, but however, it, it doesn't matter. And the other, the other thing is that maybe we change the language in the last sentence on the first paragraph, therefore, the retention of teachers and administrators, as well as staff's responsibility that the board does not take lightly, instead of using a negative, I would maybe want to use a positive there to say that the board, it takes very seriously.
Yeah.
And kind of establish what we are instead of what we're not. Would also make a suggestion that for these, our wonderful legislative group that may briefly scan something rather than reading all of it, I would like to break apart the last paragraph into bullet points rather than a long kind of run-on sentence with the, all of those numbered items there. Is that something that we could do, change those to bullets?
That's the difference between an engineer and a marketer.
Well, he's exactly like, he'll take.
That's why we work well together, Mr. Lyman.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Chair, I didn't think this letter, in its state right now, is ready for us to be approved, and we just started looking at it, I hope, so if we could go back and house it up, make sure.
Does that mean it doesn't get sent until we have another meeting, though?
No, we go to Senate before another meeting, we've been dragging this out too long. So, we, we need, what, what do you tell us, what we trying to get consensus on, what should be in the letter, then we'll redo it and send it out to everybody, review again. We, we need an approval that says we agree with the content, what's in there, checking the content of it, and.
So, I, I think our, our intent is to agree on the points, understanding that one of these we paused up, I mean, we have, we have to send out multiple times for feedback and things like that, so.
Sorry, I didn't get feedback earlier, sir.
Was a point, I think, Mr. Mace. No, but we really would like to get this in the mail, chief. So, in general nature, and then honestly, we set out a file revision for people to look at, with a deadline and get rapid feedback. Would that work?
It certainly would.
But what we, someone moved that we accept the, the letter with its content as is, with changes to be made, and send out back to the board, and once received, contact the administration.
Send out, send out the changes if necessary. So, that was a motion?
If it should.
Yeah, I sent a move, uh.
I second.
Okay, it's moved in second, okay.
Uh, I think Mrs. Vicki, if I hear it all, that we're saying, she need to hear your motion.
I move that we accept the information and its content as presented, make the necessary changes, send back out to the board members, once received the feedback, make those changes and send it to this, like you said, to the legislature, wherever it needs to go.
And I second that.
Which is what we need to.
It's a long motion.
It's a long motion, but it covers the three main points.
Okay. So, we got a motion, we got the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, oh, you have?
No.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposes? None. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Samaha, and Keith, thank you guys for working to get this out.
Mr. Chair, I know it's not on the agenda, so we don't have to do it tonight, but with the recent incident that we had in Florida, I would love for the board to take a come up with something that we can state our position, for we believe, to tell the Aiken County Legislative Delegation, as well as to the governor, on some type of position. I'm not trying to take a position tonight, but I do believe there's some work that we needs to do. Whether we do it in Aiken County, one of the things I plan on doing from the state level is to bring it up and see if we can do something from the state to take a position, as well as have a belief statement in our, our delegation assembly. So, I want to be a little bit proactive, we'd like for board members to think about it, see what we can do so we can take a position and let people know how we feel and what we should be working toward. I think it's important, at least that we address it, because I don't want it to go unnoticed.
Okay. Just a minute, please. Mr. Lyman?
Yeah, just one comment, I, I agree with that a hundred percent, and we can, you know, there's a number of bills out there for school safety that, that are proposed, so all at least, maybe we can't go through them all like we do the other ones, but I'll try to get a list of at least, so we kind of know the, the titles of all, so then we kind of at least know what's out there.
Yeah, we need it. Okay.
I think that's good.
Okay. That brings us to Officer District Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, as I asked Mr. White and his merry band of young men and women to make their way to the podium, or it's just gonna be Mr. White, I'm not sure, you've got a wonderful cast in front of you, I thought you all were gonna do something big. Before we begin, I, I certainly want to take a moment to thank the parents and, and also the students in our school district, and, and the way that folks have rallied to respond to a heightened sense of, of security and safety in our school district. We appreciate students who are very aware of their surroundings and things that are going on, and having the courage to share. We appreciate councils who are there to, to provide support for students who have need, and we certainly appreciate parents who have taken a more active role in monitoring what's taking place, not only at school, but also at home. So, we certainly want to express our appreciation in that regard, and it's, it may seem blasphemous to have Millen Valley High School make a presentation in North Augusta High, but the, the school board has had an opportunity to hear on more than one occasion, and even at the last meeting down in Hilton Head, about the thematic program that's taking place here at North Augusta High School. So, Mr. Murphy is just gonna have to forgive me tonight, I know he's in here somewhere. I know he is. But we've got some exciting news to share about the thematic program in early college that's happening at Millen Valley High, and we have the right person here to tell us about it. Mr. White, thank you.
Yes, sir, Dr. Alfred, Mr. Green, board chair, members of the board, we're here to provide an update on the Millen Valley Early College Program tonight.
I think I turned it off. There's one, sorry.
Need our, need to turn it fix.
There it is, there, you got it.
So, the mission of our program, excuse me, is to ensure connections to high-quality post-secondary opportunities and to equip our students with the skills they need to be successful in career, college, and life. Our vision for our program is to create a culture that motivates our students and encourages them to be successful socially, emotionally, and academically, and have the skills that they need to be competitive in a global society. Some of our program buzzwords, you can see on the slide, skills, we want our students to be competitive, we want to, we want to encourage our students to be career-oriented, we want our students to have a set of skills that employers are willing to pay for. We welcome our first cohort in June of twenty sixteen, those students are now juniors here at Millen Valley High School. Our second cohort of twenty-eight students began June twenty-seventh. We're in the process right now of adding our third cohort of students, and we anticipate thirty students being in that program, they will start this summer, the summer of June, the summer of twenty eighteen. We've had limited attrition. With our program being in its second year, we've only lost four students for various reasons. We lost one student who wanted to graduate early, we've had a few students who wanted to graduate for personal reasons. Our early college performance, the class of twenty nineteen, you can see that we've had a hundred As, fifty-one Bs, seven Cs, and four Ds. This data also includes the students that are now, that are not, no longer in our program. So, all of our students are here tonight, they're all As and Bs, and maybe a few Cs. The classes that they've taken thus far include psychology, American government, music appreciation, sociology, Western civilization, English one, and biology one. The class of twenty twenty, our current sophomores, you can see that these students have fifty-six As, fifty Bs, six Cs, and zero, none of our students are making any zero, any Ds, or any, we've had no students that have failed any courses. Those courses include college field, psychology one, psychology two-on-one, art appreciation, and sociology. With our early college program, excellence is the standard. The class of twenty nineteen, again, twenty, two of the fourteen students have a four-point O GPA, all of our students have at least a three-point O or higher. With the class of twenty twenty, ten of our students have a four-point O GPA, and all of our students have a three-point O or higher. With the class of 2020, 10 of our students have a 4.0 GPA, and all of our students have a 3.0 or higher. Aiken Tech is our partner, we've enhanced our partnership with Aiken Tech. Um, through our enhanced partnership, we now have an Aiken Tech advisor on campus, who's on campus two days a week. Uh, Ms. Black is not only there to work with students, she's there to work with parents and community members. Uh, our goal is for all of our students to have the opportunity to earn a mixed seats, college credits, that's all 14 of our students. So we're working day in, working daily with Aiken Tech to provide those opportunities. Some of the things we've done so far, we've expanded our TAP agreements. TAP agreements, um, exist in majority, in most of our high schools now, where students in particular courses can earn, get credit, um, at Aiken Technical College. We've also worked in to expand, are doing enrollment course offerings, um, in areas such as health science. Uh, I'm pleased to announce that we're right on the edge, uh, really, really close to offering a first medical assistance program. Uh, and speaking to one of the representatives from the State Department, it'll be the first program, um, in the state, um, at a high school. So that program will, um, involve another cohort of students, 15 to 18 students, that will complete Aiken Tech, and they will have a medical assistance certificate to complete that program. Um, so we're hoping that that program will start next year at Millen Valley High School. What are our, what are our students and parents saying about the experience? We have some quotes on this slide. Um, 100% of our students, when we surveyed them four weeks ago, said that, uh, they felt that they were supported by professors, administrators, and the school counselors. Uh, one student, "Early college has changed my life." Uh, second, another cohort, "I love the early college cohort, we support each other." Parents report, uh, all of their feedback has been positive. One parent, uh, who's here tonight, I think, uh, says that, uh, the most notable change in their child has, has been the increased, uh, level of motivation, um, to continue his or her college education. Uh, my child has already, already had good city skills, city habits, and time management, but her skills are even better during, as a result of being a part of the early college program, uh, which also gives her confidence going to the next level. What are our, what are our students planning to do after graduation? When our students graduate, uh, from Aiken Tech, uh, in 2019, I want to extend an invitation to all of our board members to attend that graduation ceremony at Aiken Tech. They will actually graduate from Aiken Tech before they graduate from Millen Valley High School. Which you can see here are some of the colleges that our, that our students are saying, from Augustine University, uh, to Duke, to Clemson, to Carolina. Um, and our students have plans also to pursue degrees, advanced degrees, beyond the bachelor's degree. Um, as you can see, our program has been very successful for our students. Again, our goal is to provide, um, uh, to ensure high-quality post-secondary opportunities for our students, all of our students. I mentioned that our goal is for our students, every one of our students to have an opportunity to leave our campus with six college credits at Aiken Tech, because of their location, because of, uh, the cost, because of our enhanced partnership. Uh, we believe that they are a viable option for our students and for our community. Uh, before I sit down, we have some members of our team, uh, here, Mr. Shumpert, please stand, Ms. Worley, I want to recognize them for what they did. And we have some of the best and brightest students in the entire world, um, here, some of our early college students. Will you please stand? So I want to say that we have a few students, we actually have 42 students in the program, uh, who have been successful, you can tell by the slides. Uh, we, we, we thought that we were going to have around 40 students, uh, when we, um, heard the word that we were going to present, but our students are, are working. Uh, we have, one student has, actually, she actually has two jobs. Uh, we have students that are softball practice, baseball practice, and soccer right now. So I'm pleased with these students. One, one student's in shorts because he was at soccer practice today. So I am, I am very thrilled to be there, principal, and very proud of them, and, uh, the skies are living for our students here, uh, at, well, I'd say here, but here at Millen Valley, at Millen Valley High School. This is weird, doing this at... Especially when we have a board meeting coming up at Millen Valley High School. So, thank you very much.
Did anybody have a question for Mr. White? He, he leaves that podium quickly. I certainly appreciate your leadership, sir, and, and what you mean, not only to your students, to the school, but also to the Millen Valley community.
Yes.
Uh, you do a tremendous job. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And for the young folks who are here, I tell you, as I think back now, two years ago, when we were talking to folks throughout the community, and helping them understand this concept, there were a whole lot of folks that said you could do it. You're going to prove them wrong. But we're very proud of you. One more year, straight A's across the board, all right? And Mr. White's going to cook you one of those steak dinners. You know what I'm talking about, right? You can do it. We'd love to see you at graduation. If you make it, you can wear your Aiken Tech gown in your Millen Valley graduation. We'll be excited for you. Thank you so much. That's it for me, sir.
Okay. Well, that's, that's been one of the, um, goals that we had set a couple of years ago that we wanted to see in Aiken County, students marching across the stage, getting their college degree, associate degree before they got their high school degree. And it's coming to fruition, I'm sure board members will be attending those ceremonies, as well as instructors as well. Just want to say before we get ready to go into the executive session, thanks to the North Augusta High School, uh, Mr. Murphy and the staff for providing the setup for us tonight, and hosting this school board meeting. Thank you and the staff. You didn't hear me, okay? And also tonight, uh, just like to recognize, uh, the North Augusta Administrator, Mr. Todd Glover's in the house with us tonight. Thank you for being here. Now, he may have had to be here tonight, I don't know for sure, but... But thank you for coming and giving your time as well, and thank you for what you do over here in North Augusta, and helping us with the school district as well. Thank you. And Mr. High-Tile, I'm going to give you a lay of sale, and Mr. Ashley sent Millen Valley with y'all. That's the school that you guys represent. Y'all have any encouraging words to them?
They earned, they deserve, that's the elevation that we gave, and we continue to reward them.
Evening. All right. Okay. And with that, then that concludes our, uh, open agenda. We will need an executive session. Uh, we need an executive session to go into, um, for the purpose of considering the following matters and such are, as the board may deem appropriate to which. We'll have one student appeal, contractual issues, discussion and consideration of a proposed contractual matter, personnel issue, administrative appointments, personnel issue consideration, and legal briefings, uh, explanation of legal nature of patron appeal, and procedural needs to implement process. Following the executive session meeting, board will reconvene into regular session to announce the matters considered, and to take any action thereon as may be necessary. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. We are going to the executive session in three minutes.